My name is Andrew Chech. I'm here on behalf of Richard Tinn, the editor of the Economics Journal. Richard's indisposed today. Happy here, Chris Hansen. Happy here, he's sad. I'm sad. He's happy here. This is the Economics Journal's special session on model selection and inference. We have two speakers. Economically, I think they are both hands-ended, but they have Bruce and Chris. And I'm going to talk in reverse alphabetical order. So Chris Hansen is going to speak first. I'm going to just give a very tiny biography of both of them, and then they can have the rest of the session to themselves, I think is the way to go. So Bruce Hansen is the Mary Claire Ashen, but I'm a Ph.D.-ist English economist. It's even longer than my title. And we'll get into that later. And Victor Bealman, the professor of economics at Wisconsin University, PhD 2009, since I was last in this place, BC, at Wisconsin. He has worked with many, many papers on models, particularly structural change, structure of phrase. Today, though, he's talking about something quite the same, about shrinkage estimation, vectorial regression, and as the title suggests, a program here on the Big Data, I guess. Thank you very much, Bruce. For the two papers. The first speaker today, though, is Chris Hansen. Chris is the Wollis W booth professor of econometrics and statistics at the, I guess it must be the Wollis W booth.
Different booth.
Different booth. The booth school. Business of the University of Chicago. This is a MIT PhD of 2004 and since then, been at the booth of meteoric rides. It's a full chair up in just five years, 2001.
Not chair up for five years.
Well, your feet are need to be tidied.
I guess that's the sort of measure.
That's everything we're discussing. And there on today, he works on a variety of topics in econ. I remember being absolutely inspired by one of his papers on estimation of non-separable models with endogenous explanatory variables. He's worked in many other areas too. Identification, estimation, panel making, also estimation involving weak instruments. And today, it's a paper, as we said, there's no easily pronounceable acronym here. It seems to be an Albanian or Christian thing. We did it, but welcome, Chris. Thank you very much indeed for coming as well. The floor is yours, both of you. I'm looking forward to hearing you. You have to send me both of you one of these to relating topics. Thanks very much.
All right. Thank you, Andrew, for the lovely introduction. And thanks to all of you for sticking around to the very end of this conference. I hope it's not too boring for the last session. So I'm going to be talking about that long title thing. It's a bit of a bait and a switch from the title listed in the program. This is also more preliminary work than I would usually present, but I got sick of presenting the other things. So we're going to present some work that a bunch of us have been doing recently. So this is with Victor Turnedrew-Cabot at MIT, Venice Jafar-Cabot at UCLA, Merk de Meyer, who is a student of Victor's at MIT, and myself. This is, like I said, this is pretty preliminary. We're still actually working on a bunch of stuff related to this paper. But a preliminary version, I believe, is on archive now, so you can at least sort of see what's going on. All right? So yeah, it's a long title, but basically you should think of this title as, we want to use modern sort of machine learning methods because lots of people want to use them, and we jumped on that bandwagon. But we also want to be able to do valid inference after using such methods, or we'll call them causal parameters. So things that maybe economists would care about more than just a pure prediction exercise. All right? So there's a long title that basically says, we're going to try to do inference after using machine learning methods. Okay? All right. So like I said, the main goal in this piece is to provide estimators and inferential statements about a low-dimensional parameter of interest, we'll call that parameter theta, in the presence of a high-dimensional or non-parametric nuisance parameter. Okay? So without the last clause in that first bullet point, this would be a traditional semi-parametric estimation problem. Okay? So, and you're going to see it looks exactly like a traditional semi-parametric estimation problem. All right? We've got a low-dimensional parameter we're trying to learn about. There is some high-dimensional nuisance. And the departure we're going to make is we're going to try to estimate that high-dimensional nuisance function using machine learning methods as opposed to more traditional non-parametric methods that I assume all of you are very familiar with, like kernels, or series, nearest neighbors, whatever. Okay? So we're going to replace that step with a machine learning step. All right? And, you know, that, we really would like to be able to, you know, do this work to cover the sexy things people are doing in machine learning. So we'd like to be able to use random forests, or we'd like to be able to use boosting, or some other things that maybe you know, maybe you don't, which have shown to be very effective in prediction in lots and lots of environments. They work with large data sets, they work with small data sets. They seem to be very effective. All right? And of course, the work we're going to do, again, if you're familiar with the semi-parametric estimation literature, some of which is cited up there, is going to look really familiar because this is going to build very much on that fundamental semi-parametric estimation framework. All right? Now, why do we want to do this? Again, it's because these methods, certainly, you know, I work in a business school. My group at the business school is half statisticians, half econometricians. And I've seen machine learning methods now for a long time, and people keep telling me that they are incredibly effective at doing predictions. And they indeed seem to be quite effective at doing predictions. And there are a number of nice features about them. In particular, the really popular ones are roughly black box, which has some pros and some cons. But it's nice to be able to go out, push one button on your computer, and get a very flexible, very effective predictor. And that's something that, say, a random forest is going to deliver. All right? Now, a problem with this is being, or maybe it's not a problem, but it is not obvious that providing a good predictor necessarily provides good answers for causal inference questions. It's not obvious that it necessarily provides valid inferential statements. Okay? And so what we want to do is show how we can use this modern machinery to answer the kinds of questions you would answer with a traditional semi-parametric model. Okay? And I don't need to belabor that. Okay? So in terms of the literature on inference using machine learning methods, there have been a bunch of papers that have focused on what I would call Lasso-type methods, particularly L1 penalized M-estimation kinds of problems. And there's a bunch of citations up there. A number of them have my name on them, some don't. Okay? And there are a bunch of nice things about Lasso-type methods, which is why it was natural that we develop a bunch of theory for them. In particular, they're analytically tractable, they're computationally tractable. But it's the analytic tractability that was nice as a theorist. You could actually do a bunch of the algebra and show you get good properties with appropriate modifications of usual kinds of procedures. Okay? Now, again, as advertised on the first slide, I want to break away from Lasso-type methods in the talk today and consider more elaborate, more frontier kinds of machine learning methods that we actually are using. Okay? So I should also note that there are a couple of exceptions in the inference literature where the underlying machine learning technique being used is not Lasso. So there are the two papers by Susan Athie. One co-authored with Stephen Wager, the other with Gino Imbens, both of which are looking at tree-based methods. And they also differ from what I'm going to do today in that at least the Athie-Wager and the Imbens-Athee paper are much more non-parametric. They do not have a finite dimensional target parameter in mind. They're actually trying to model an entire treatment response surface. Whereas we're focused on a low-dimensional, maybe it's an average treatment effect, which is a summary of a treatment response surface, but we don't want the entire non-parametric object. All right? And what we're going to be doing in what I show you is building off some results I have in a paper with Victor and Martin Schwindler. So we're going to take that framework and expand it beyond the Lasso method. Okay? All right. So let me illustrate the basic ideas in a really simple context. And this will be the context that I carried throughout the talk today. The paper covers a more general framework. Okay? So we've got a partially linear model. This is a semi-parametric model. We have a high-dimensional nuisance function, what I call g0, which is then depending on a set of control variable z. And we have the parameter of interest theta0, which are the coefficients on the linear part in the partially linear model. So maybe d is a policy variable. We would like to understand what is the impact of d on y, holding z fixed. And we don't want to restrict the functional form for z to be, say, linear. And z itself may in fact be high-dimensional. So z might include a bunch of different predictor variables. All right? So that's the basic structural equation. We'll call it a structural equation. That's the model of interest. And then we added a second equation, and we'll make use of that. That second equation simply is an equation that captures confoundry. Okay? We don't think d was randomly assigned. We think d is correlated to z somehow. And therefore, we have some non-parametric association between d and z that we're going to worry about. Okay? So that's just a representation at this point, assuming you believe conditional expectations exist. All right? So there we go. There's the basic problem. We care only about the first equation, and we really care only about theta. All right. So again, if you are familiar with the classic semi-parametric literature, this is not going to look surprising at all. I've written down three moment equations that in principle you could use to identify theta. If you look at those three moment equations, you will see that they are all true. Okay? Well, the first one says, if we could partial out the effect of z from the top equation, that's g0, we could look at that residual. It's uncorrelated with d by the moment restriction written on the previous slide. Therefore, we could identify theta from that. Second equation looks like a propensity score adjustment. If I move this to a treatment effect setting, this would correspond to using a propensity score for the effect of controlled z. Okay? And we also know if we can get rid of the confounding by partiallying out from d, we again have a valid moment restriction. The final equation is the one you all should immediately jump to. Okay? That's the classic Robinson moment equation. That's going to correspond to the semi-parametrically efficient score for learning the parameter theta0. Okay? That's going to be the one we use. And I'll try to walk through why that is. Again, if you've seen semi-parametric, if you're familiar with this, this is not going to look surprising. Okay? So basic idea, though, is rather than use a traditional non-parametric estimator to try to find those nuisance functions, be it g0, m0, or those conditional expectations, we're going to replace kernel or series with machine learning method. Okay? So we're going to try to estimate the expectation of y given z, for example, using a random forest. All right? And we would like to present results that are not specific to the machine learning method you choose. Okay? So there are results out there available for Lasso, but they are specific to using Lasso. There are results out there available for any of your favorite traditional non-parametric estimators. Okay? And we want to provide the extension that says, you plug in your favorite machine learning method, and it's still going to work. All right? So we'll get to that in a second. Now, why don't we use, say, the first equation? All right? This should hopefully be pretty familiar. Pretends somehow we had an estimator, a non-parametric estimator of g0. Call that g-hat. Don't worry about where that came from. But we've got some way to non-parametrically estimate g-hat. We plug that back. Oops, that was not the right button. We plug that back into our first moment restriction. We put in g-hat, and then we solve for the parameter d implied by that moment restriction. That's, of course, just the LS estimate given that first line. It's really easy. And we can decompose that estimator into two pieces. The first piece, labeled A, is obviously under any of your usual conditions, going to be nice and well behaved. The second piece is the piece we're going to worry about. We're going to call that piece B. What happens to piece B? All right? Well, generically, piece B is not going to converge. It's actually going to diverge. Okay? And the basic idea, heuristically, is quite simple. Okay? So we'll not worry about the details. If you care about details, go look at the other literature or look at this paper. Okay? But what's the basic idea? We've got that estimation error showing up inside a root n-normalized sum. Okay? Estimation error, at best, is going to look like 1 over root n. So if we had a nice parametric, everything well-behaved model, that's going to look like 1 over root n. As soon as you try to estimate that non-parametrically, it's going to look worse than 1 over root n. Okay? And so heuristically, what we're going to end up with is an object that looks like root n times something which is vanishing, but is vanishing at a slow rate. And therefore, that term in principal divergence. Okay? In other words, if we normalize by root n, we don't get a consistent asymptotic normal estimator. We get something that diverges, we have a slower rate of convergence, and we don't like that. Okay? So we could do the same exact argument with the moment equation too. So it doesn't matter propensity score or regression adjustment. You're going to have the same thing going on. What does equation 3 do? Well, equation 3 does both. Okay? So you're going to use, again, going back to treatment effects sort of language, you're going to use the propensity score, and you are also going to use regression adjustment. All right? And what's the value added to doing that? Well, again, we look at equation 3, we solve it for the parameter of interest. We've plugged in non-parametric estimates of the nuisance functions. Those non-parametric estimates were estimated by machine learning methods. Okay? And what we have, v-hat, is just the residual from partialing out controls from the endogenous variable, or, sorry, the variable of interest. W-hat is the residual from partialing controls out from the left-hand side variable. We solve this equation. We can again decompose our estimator into two pieces. Okay? There's actually a third piece up there, but it's small, so we're not going to worry about it. Okay? What are those two pieces? Again, we've got term a star. Under any of your usual sorts of assumptions, a star is going to be well behaved. Now, what does b star look like? I'm sure it's on the next slide, so I'll flip there. Nope. Not on the next slide, so we'll sit here. Okay? What does b star look like? All right? B star is now a root n-normalized object, just like it was before, but it's the product of two estimation errors. Okay? That product is important. Why? Well, each of the estimation errors itself is vanishing. If you multiply two vanishing things together, what happens? It vanishes more quickly. All right? So heuristically, by regression adjusting and propensity score balancing, we're eliminating to an additional order the influence of the non-parametric estimation. All right? And so we can then show that, oops, wrong direction, sorry. We can then show that that term b star is again going to look like a root n times now a product of estimation errors. And as long as that product of estimation errors is fast enough, particularly the usual semi-parametric condition is you need to estimate the nuisance functions at a rate faster than n to the minus 1/4. Take n to the minus 1/4 plus n to the minus 1, or times n to the minus 1/4 to get n to the minus 1/2, and get that by root n, we're good. All right? So that's all that's going on. And this shouldn't, again, this should not be surprising. This is just basic semi-parametrics in a nutshell. So first thing we need, which is no different than in any other semi-parametric estimation context, is we need to use orthogonalized estimating equations. That's jargon I've seen before, actually. I read that in Bruce's, I think it's in some book you wrote. Okay? Anyway, we've got these orthogonal estimating equations. All right? And what do we mean by orthogonal? Well, it's not on the next slide. So I'll tell you what we mean by orthogonal in a second. All right? What's this slide showing? This is showing if we take that exercise, and instead of using a traditional non-parametric estimator, we use a random forest. All right? And we're also going to do one other thing which is not clear from this slide. We're going to use sample splitting. And sample splitting is going to be important for our theoretical results, and I'll try to explain why that is. All right? What are the two histograms up there? So there's a blue one and a red one. The red histogram is the resulting estimate of a treatment effect after using random forest to learn the nuisance functions and using the orthogonal estimate equation, the efficiency score. Okay? And theta0 is the true parameter value. What you can see, there's actually a little bias that we'll talk about later. Okay? You can see you've got something that looks at least kind of Gaussian, and it's kind of close to being centered over the value that you would like to be centered over. What's the blue thing? The blue thing is same procedure, but you use moment equation number two, which was the propensity score adjustment moment equation. Okay? And really, all you want to see is you're shifted out more. Okay? Why? Well, because you don't get this product of estimation errors. The non-parametric estimation bias in estimating the nuisance function by random forest is not averaging out quickly enough. And we're left over with something where if you took, say, size of 5% level tests, the size using that blue curve is going to be very close to 1. Okay? It's actually about 90%. The size based on the red curve is around 10%. Not great. And we'll come back and talk about that. I would much rather have 5% for a 5% level test. Okay? But we're getting in the ballpark. So that's the first ingredient, though, orthogonal estimating equations. That keeps bias manageable, is the intuition for that. All right? Now, okay, this way it said. Okay? So the key difference between those two curves in the moment equations 1 and 2 and moment equation 3 is the moment equation 3 corresponds to a moment condition that has an orthogonality property. Okay? In particular, what you have is if you look at that moment condition as a function of the nuisance parameters, and you look at the derivative of the moment condition with respect to those nuisance parameters, and then evaluate the derivative at the truth, you get back 0. Okay? What does that say in words? That says, a local perturbation in the nuisance function does not invalidate the moment condition. Okay? That's really nice. Because what's going to happen when you use any kind of non-parametric estimator, machine learning or otherwise, in an exercise like this? You're not going to be plugging in the true value. You're plugging in an estimator of it. That's a local perturbation of the truth. Your moment condition had better still be true when you perturb that function. Okay? So that's the orthogonality condition we need. There's a reasonably formal statement there in the partially linear model. There's a very formal statement in paper. But the basic idea is simple. Moment condition needs to be valid when you perturb the moment function a little bit by plugging in not quite the right value of the nuisance function. Okay? So we'll now move off the partially linear model to the more general model. Sorry, Andrew, I'm going to keep contracting time.
Oh, you're doing good. I mean, you've got 20 minutes.
20 minutes, good. All right, we're good. Okay? Okay? So let's look at a more general model really quickly. Okay? So what we have here? We have just a general semi-parametric estimation problem. Psi is a moment function. Theta0 is the parameter of interest. eta0 is your high-dimensional nuisance function. All right? We believe, you know, the economic theory, whatever we're looking at, tells us that this moment function is true. All right? And then we, of course, have data, which I denote as w. All right? We believe the nuisance functions belong to some convex set, and that we can put a norm over that convex set. All right? And for some reason, we called that norm the e-norm, which, don't ask me why we called it the e-norm, but that's the e-norm. Okay? Anyway, there's some norm that'll show up. That's not the 2 norm, or the 1 norm, or anything else. That's the natural norm for this space. All right? Now, next thing we're going to do, and this is an artifact, I think, of wanting to provide very generic results for machine learning methods, is we're going to split the sample. Okay? And we're going to allow you to split the sample not evenly, although it's hard for me to imagine why you wouldn't want a 50-50 split. But if you want a 90-10 split, go ahead. Or a 10-90 split, or a 5-95, I don't care. Okay? So we were going to split the sample into two components. Okay? And when you see the lowercase n, lowercase n is the number of observations that you're actually going to use after splitting the sample. Capital N is the total number of observations you had available, but you just threw a bunch of them away. Okay? So we have lowercase n observations left over. We're going to live in an IID, or an independent framework anyway, so we're going to split the sample at random. Okay? We've got a random partition then. That just breaks our sampling into its two bits. And any asymptotic results we present are going to be taking lowercase n to infinity. Okay? So we're going to assume that after splitting, you still have a reasonably big sample. All right? Now, why are we doing sample splitting? I'll be honest, I'm not a huge fan of sample splitting, but why are we doing it? We're doing it because unfortunately, the sorts of refined results you need to do to verify good properties of the second-step inference after doing a machine learning method are just not available. So when we did the Lasso results, we didn't have sample split. Why? Because Lasso has a simple enough analytic structure. We could actually work through everything without sample splitting and show that things worked out well. Okay? Once you go to a random forest, we don't have simple enough analytic structure. And so we're going to cheat and split the sample, and that's going to make a bunch of the conditions we need much more simple to look at and to verify. So I hope I'm not being too honest, but you know, that's why it's a theoretical device. I am not sure whether it's necessary. What I am sure is, given the proof concepts that we are currently using, it is not clear how you improve validity of the inference after using these machine learning methods without sample splitting. So that's the cost of what we're doing. If you look at the Athie-Wager and the Athie-Imbens stuff, you'll notice there are also sample splitting. Okay? So that seems to be at least, again, given the proof methods we have now, that's a way that allows us to relax some entropy bounds and some other things by keeping the problem nice and tractable. All right? So that's all in the background now. The fact that we split the sample already happened. Okay? And I don't know if I explicitly mentioned it for quite a while, but remember, it is actually important to the theoretical results we're presenting. The sample has already been split. And if you look through the proofs, you will see that we make heavy use of the sample splitting. Okay? So now, next key condition is the orthogonality condition. Like I said, I already talked about that, and I'm not going to belabor it. You just need your moment functions to be locally robust to small perturbations of the nuisance functions. Okay? We'll talk a little more about that in a second. All right? Now, we're going to give you the conditions. All right? J0 is just the usual Hessian kind of matrix that's going around in estimation. Okay? So that's the derivative of the moment condition evaluating the truth. Fine with that. We've got a bunch of numbers that we're not going to worry about. I'll probably just focus on the words in blue. Okay? So what conditions do we need? None of these should be terribly surprising against anyone who's looked at semi-parametric. So first of all, we can't have the parameter show up on the boundary. Fine. We all know that somewhere in any asymptotic normality result. If we didn't want asymptotic normality, we wanted to do something more elaborate, we could deal with that, but let's not worry about it. So parameter is safely moved away from the boundary of the parameter space. Okay? Second, we have to have a notion of differentiability. Okay? You'll notice the differentiability here is of the population moment condition. It's not of the psi function itself. So this covers a variety of non-smooth objective functions.[1608.24] So quantile regression is fine, things like that. All right, next, I've talked about this a number of times. We need the orthogonality condition. That's really the most important in terms of this stuff that's going on here. One thing I will note at this point, the orthogonality condition is of course a local condition. And that means it doesn't have to hold over the whole parameter space T. So capital T without the script is the parameter space for the nuisance function. Script T is going to be a much smaller parameter space, where we're going to know the truth is going to lie with high probability because we're going to be using consistent estimators at the end of the day. Okay, so we need the orthogonality to hold again only in a small region within the true value. All right, third condition just says the model's identified. That's hard to get away from. Andrew tries.
Let him suicide.
So yeah, we're just going to assume point identification. That's what that assumption is doing. All right, and then we've got a bunch of equi-continuity style conditions that if you care about, you can look at and say there's a bunch of equi-continuity style conditions. Okay, in terms of those conditions, the seemingly fundamental one is again the orthogonality condition. All right, third thing we need, so we have three key ingredients in the standard scenario. One, sample splitting. Two, orthogonality. Three, you can't use bad estimators of the nuisance function. Okay, that shouldn't be surprising either, but that's what our next set of conditions are going to say. Okay, so all of these conditions are regarding your ability to estimate those non-parametric or high dimensional objects that are showing up in the problem. Okay, so these two conditions together basically are telling you a rate of convergence for your non-parametric estimator. All right, remember, script T is a subset of the space in which the high dimensional object lives. All right, and if you take these two conditions, what does it say? Says the truth is in that neighborhood. It says the estimator will be in that neighborhood with high probability. All right, and then it says for any element of that neighborhood, the distance between that element and the truth is small. Okay, that tau pi n is then going to be literally the rate of convergence of your non-parametric estimator. Okay, so you take these two things together. We've just told you your non-parametric estimator is converging at rate tau pi n. Okay, now, we have an entropy condition. This is important, and again, this is somewhere where the sample splitting helps. The entropy condition says the function you're trying to learn and your approximation to the function you're trying to learn are not too complex. Okay, it's again a fairly standard condition, but we're going to have to live with that. Okay, we've got a moment condition, which is not that big a deal. We've got some rate conditions which are more refined than really probably necessary. But if you look at these, a sufficient condition for these rate conditions is n to the minus one-fourth convergence of the non-parametric estimator. Okay, so again, you know, I think maybe some other co-authors would sell this more than I am, but I wanted to sell this as, this is semi-parametrics. If you ignore the sample splitting step, these are exactly the results you would use to establish good properties of any semi-parametric estimator. Okay, we're adding the sample splitting because that's going to help us relax a bunch of other things, and maybe we'll see that. Okay, maybe it's not clear. And the reason maybe it's not clear is because you're used to seeing results like this from semi-parametrics. All right, what's underlying those results from usual traditional semi-parametrics? It's the fact that kernels and series are well behaved. We can do the kind of analysis that says, you know what? These are all the conditions we need. If you look at our results on LASSO, which are not presented here, because this is not that paper, you will see that the results we have for LASSO, which do not rely on sample splitting, are stronger, or sorry, the conditions are stronger than the conditions we've written down here. Why? Because LASSO is a less well behaved estimator than a kernel or a series. Of course, it handles a different set, different scenario. Okay, to get yourself to handle that scenario, you have to make some trade-offs. All right, these conditions are weaker than the conditions we've written down for good properties after using LASSO estimation. But they come with the thing I hit, but have tried to make very clear we're doing. That's because we're sample splitting. Okay, if we weren't sample splitting, then we could not use this weak standard set of conditions to establish good properties of the resulting estimator. Okay, so it really is those three things. If you want to use machine learning methods to do non-parametric or high dimensional estimation, at least given the proof concepts we have now, you either use LASSO in the full sample or you use something more elaborate, but you split the sample. All right, and hopefully, I really hope, somebody smarter comes along and shows that you don't have to split the sample. But at this point, that's what we've got. Okay, if you take all of those results together, what does that give you? It gives you our main result, which is in the middle of this slide, which says the semi-parametric estimator of the parameter you care about has a very nice asymptotic representation. We get root n asymptotic normality. We get sensible inference, exactly the way you would think based on semi-parametric estimation. Those inferential statements are valid uniformly over a fairly large class of models. Okay, that class of models is of course expanding as the sample size increases. All right, and this is a set of, I argue, nice properties to have. Okay, again, if you didn't want the uniform validity, which maybe we don't, I think we do, you could get validity without sample splitting. Okay, but that would be point wise, and we could then cook up very sensible scenarios where your inference is going to look really poor. Okay, to get the uniform validity, we're also making use of that sample splitting. All right, now, I don't have that long to talk, so a couple more comments. In terms of the orthogonality condition, every model you write down does not satisfy that condition, unfortunately. Okay, however, you can often create a situation where that condition is satisfied by following very classic stuff from the semi-parametric estimation literature. So I'll quickly illustrate that in the likelihood context, and then maybe I'll finish. Okay, so this goes back to Naaman 79, actually goes back to Naaman 59, but you know, at least there, maybe longer. All right, so the basic idea, we've written down a likelihood model. Again, we could do this more generally, but let's live with a likelihood model. Okay, we've got the parameter we care about, alpha. We've got nuisance parameter beta. Beta is high dimensional, but you know, it doesn't matter really. Okay, we know that under regularity, we have score equations satisfied. Okay, and what you should look at is if you look at those score equations and look at the type of orthogonality, which is you differentiate those score equations with respect to the nuisance parameter, you do not have those score equations are locally robust to perturbations of the nuisance parameter. Okay, so what do you do? You define new score equations, okay, through a simple partially out idea. All right, so we've defined a new moment condition on this slide called psi. What's psi? Again, the parameter of interest is alpha, which I redefined theta, I'm sorry. There's a now theta on this slide. Okay, the parameter of interest is theta, which I redefined from alpha on the previous slide. All right, we've got the original score equation for theta, and then we've subtracted a piece off. What is that piece? That piece is mu times the score for the nuisance parameter. Mu has a particular definition, which I'm not going to go through at the time, but there it is. Mu solves this system of equations. Okay, and it's very easy to see if you look at the score equation at the top of this slide that the desired orthogonality property is true. Okay, you can do this sort of transformation quite generally. The important thing to notice, which I think is really interesting, is in order to guarantee the orthogonality property, we have to expand the dimension of the nuisance parameter. Okay, so the original nuisance parameter was dimension p, which is the dimension of beta. The new nuisance parameter is the dimension of mu plus the dimension of p, or sorry, of beta. Mu is a matrix, which is d rows. D is the number of parameters you care about, times dimension of beta columns. So to ensure orthogonality, you've had to greatly magnify the dimension of the nuisance space. And again, full honesty, which I suppose is not a good idea. We haven't really dealt with that. Okay, at this point, we just said, well, there's another nuisance parameter, mu. We just throw that in with beta. We redefine the nuisance space as mu beta, and we move on. But that new nuisance parameter could be very, very high dimensional. Okay, in a lot of cases, it turns out to be very manageable. So in the partially linear model, super easy. We take your original moment function, and we add one new nuisance function, the conditional expectation of y given z. That's fine. The original nuisance function was the conditional expectation of d given z. We add one more, not a big deal. In a context like this, we've added a bunch of nuisance functions. All right, okay, so I'm going to end on time. So skip that. Partially linear model, we've already talked about. I just want to note, if you go back and looked at what looked maybe like complex conditions in the partially linear model, they boil down to very, very simple conditions. So you just need boundedness of moments, boundedness of the parameter vector, and n to the one-fourth convergence of the non-parametric estimators. If you take these three conditions and compare them to the conditions in our resstud paper on partially linear model with LASSO, these are substantially easier. Okay, and the reason again is for sample splitting. We're cheating a little bit. All right. All right, so I think I'm out of time.
Well, I think so. There's no questions?
Well, we don't, we don't need questions at all.
These guys want to laugh.
All right, so I think what I'll do is just end on a very preliminary, not very interesting empirical example, but you know, as the theorist, we don't have to do interesting empirical examples. So we're going to look at the 401k caseing I've looked at a bunch of times, and I'm not going to go through it too much. We want to understand financial assets of individuals. We want to understand how that's affected by whether they are involved. In this case, working at a firm that offers a 401K, which is just a government subsidized retirement account. Okay, and the story that was told in this series of papers by Peturaventy and Wise, which we're building on, said this is fine as an identification argument as long as you control for the other characteristics of the job that people might have been considering when they were deciding to take the job or not. Okay, and their argument, in a really brief nutshell, boils down to we're only looking at data from right after 401Ks were introduced. This argument would definitely not hold water now. Right around when 401Ks were introduced, probably a lot of people were not terribly cognizant of it. They were looking at features of the job when they were trying to decide my job to take, like their income and other amenities. But this new program that was out there probably didn't enter their mind. That's the argument, you can buy it or not. But the key feature of that argument is you have to control for the other features of the job. Okay, and even in their dataset, this seems perhaps to a lot of you like low dimensional context, but it's not. So we have 9,000 observations, 10,000 observations, and we have a set of like nine variables. I should remember, but we'll say nine. A set of nine variables. Okay, and you then should ask, what does it mean to control for nine variables? And the answer, maybe, is well, you just put nine variables into your linear model, and you run the regression of y on 401K and those nine variables, in which case this is low dimensional. Or maybe you actually have to estimate a nine dimensional nuisance function, where that nuisance function is the non-parametric object that captures all of the ways these things could affect your savings or your eligibility. Okay, and again, we can argue about whether nine is big or small, but I will argue nine dimensional non-parametric estimation with 10,000 observations puts you in fact in the high dimensional model setting. We all know the results that say if you want to do really well using a kernel estimator with nine or 10 variables, you need millions of observations. Okay, so we want to use a modern machine learning sort of result. We hope it does a better job. There are at least claims that they predict better. So we're going to use a modern non-parametric estimator based on a bunch of different things. We're actually going to use a ton of different estimators. Okay, so you know, the top equation is just if you look at y on z directly, which we know suffers from this clear indogonate bias. You get an estimate of $20,000. Okay, so being eligible for a 401K increases savings by $20,000. But we know that that's, you know, all sorts of confounding going on there. If you look at a linear regression, just using the raw variables, you get an effect of $6,000 with a reasonably big standard error. You may or may not find this interesting. I find it interesting, a bunch of the other stuff. Okay, so baseline number three is what shows up in the Peturaventy Wise papers. So we just took the specification they ran with in all their papers. I will argue that's a pretty sensible non-parametric estimator. If you actually look back, they didn't run linear regression of y on stuff. They carefully dummy things out. They thought a bunch about where do we think really these differences are at? And I will call this heuristic intuitive, but pretty sensible non-parametrics. Okay, they get an answer of about $8,700. Now, we tried a bunch of different machine learning methods. So tree, maybe you can ask about these if you care, I'll just say the name. So tree is a machine learning method. Our point estimate is really similar to the Peturaventy Wise estimate. Random forests are probably the most popular machine learning method out there. And see, it's not quite the same as the Peturaventy Wise estimate, but it's within spitting distance. Okay, boosted trees are perhaps my current favorite machine learning method. And we see that they're pretty darn close again. All right, and then we try a bunch of other stuff. So all of these, I should point out, if you're not aware of this stuff, the reason people like trees, forests, and say boosted trees is they are pretty researcher independent. You push a button, you get an answer out. Okay, these other methods, ridge, LASSO, et cetera, require a bit more input from the researcher in that you have to specify the set of basis functions you're going to be considering. So I take this nine variables, and from these nine variables, I construct 299 variables that I think hopefully capture whatever nonlinear and interaction structure is out there. Okay, we estimate those, and I'm just going to quickly say they're all within spitting distance of each other. They're all pretty close. Bruce might be interested in this. We've talked about this before. The things in red are the ones that beat on the out-of-sample validation exercise, which is something we can do because we did split the sample. And maybe that's a benefit of being able to split the sample. So we can look at the out-of-sample validation exercise. I find it interesting that ridge is preferred. And then finally, if you take the combination where you choose the RMSE minimizer at each step, you end up with an estimate which is again, because they're all pretty close to each other, pretty close. Okay, so Peturaventy and Wise are probably happy. We get answers that are pretty close to their answers. Okay, the theory suggests this should be the case. The theory says you sample split, you use your favorite non-parametric estimator, you should get within the ballpark of the right answer. Okay, and we sort of see that here. And so I went through those. Let me just say, so things that I would like to, you know, like, so this is preliminary. We're still working on a bunch of stuff. Sample splitting, something I don't like, it adds randomness. Obviously, you split the sample once, but you could have split it tons and tons of other ways. How to think about that randomness, characterize it, and maybe even exploit it to improve inferential properties is something we're working on. All right, the other thing I don't like about sample splitting is small sample biases unfortunately get exacerbated when you split your sample. And all the estimators we're talking about suffer from big small sample biases. Okay, I think that's a really big deal. You would often solve that by undersmoothing, and it's less obvious how you would undersmoothing in this context. Okay, and then the final thing we're interested in is if we are going to go to the effort of sample splitting, in principle, we could use that as a validation device and as a method to build a better ensemble. So you think about model lagerage, you can think about a bunch of other things based on those validation exercises you could run. So we'll end. I think I'm more or less on time.
Thank you very much. We have time to have questions. So you mentioned that the sample splitting is key in having the entropy bound.
Yes.
Is there a, perhaps there isn't, is there a clean intuitive way of explaining? Because essentially you want the sample splitting to do with the complexity of?
Yeah, think about, it helps. So think about this following scenario. Pretend you're actually doing model selection, which is what I said I was going to talk about. And what you do when you do model selection is of course, you go out and you try a bunch of different models. You choose the very best one based on the dataset you've looked at. What does that do in terms of, you know, theory? That bumps up the entropy. So you're saying, I'm going to fit the most complex thing I can fit within this class. Okay, by sample splitting, what you do, you do the same thing using half the data. So you're going to overfit by accident within that half of the data. But that entropy introduced by overfitting does not carry over to the other part because that's random relative to the rest. So you added some noise, but you haven't added complexity. And that's sort of the key insight here.
Any other questions? Let's ask some questions at the end if we still want to get through it back.
Sounds good.
Very much.
Bruce?
Yes.
Actually, I don't stand.
Yeah.
I don't want to instruct you. That's what we do about. Wrong. Presentation.
Okay, well, thanks for kindly inviting me to MacSussex and give a.
You should explain your undergrad.
I have the distinguished honor of actually spending a year of my life at the University of Sussex, one of the college students. So this is a return to something that I learned a long time ago. Strange how much after 30 years one forgets though.
I'm sorry, Gail, for.
This is my report, it does not go there. So we're talking today about some very preliminary work. This is so preliminary that it's kind of embarrassing to present, but I think that hopefully all of you can have a few things. Also because it's preliminary, the danger that I might be overly emphasizing algebra and math when I probably should be emphasizing more the basics, but we'll see how it goes. Now, I noticed looking around the room, there's a lot of people here doing kind of methods, but don't do vector autoregressions. Okay, so maybe you're not that excited about vector autoregressions, but at the core, what the methods I'm talking about here are applicable when the parameter of interest is a nonlinear function of like regression coefficient. So you have something that is relatively well behaved, but the parameter of interest is a complicated nonlinear function of those. And then it doesn't really matter if it's a VAR or something else. But to be specific, what is a VAR? A vector autoreg, by the way, this, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So VAR is just says that you have a dynamic model where a vector of variables is a linear function of, but it doesn't have to be linear, but most models in practice are linear. A function of lags and an error, and this is a system of variables. So you have m of them. Y is m dimensional, and there's typically a bunch of lags, p. And this is, you know, it's quite simply the workhorse model in applied time series macroeconomics. It's just used routinely, routinely, routinely for multi-step forecasting, impulse response analysis, variancy compositions, and compare property of the structural models versus these kind of reduced form specifications. Now, you have a bunch of choices when you pick a VAR. So this session's supposed to be about model selection. So this is the kind of the model specifications issue in a VAR. Well, which variables? How many variables? So how big should that be? Should it be two? Or maybe it could be one, you have a simple autoregression. Maybe it's 20, maybe it's seven. Which variables? How many lags? One lag, 10 lags, five lags? We also have the question of, in addition, about what sample periods should we use? How big should the sample size be? Now, these things are all involved with huge amount of trade-offs in practice. Now, from a kind of a complexity point of view, what we should want to use is the most recent sample period so that we eliminate structural change, but use every single variable imaginable in the universe, and use a bazillion lags. But of course, there's cost to doing that, so we can't. So the way I'm talking about it here is it's tempting to take a big data approach of having lots of variables, use many lags to account for the. use many lags to account for the dynamics. But when you do that, you see that each equation is going to have approximately m times p coefficients. And that's going to be very, very large in practice. And in most applications, people are worried about using small samples because of potential structural change. So to get around this problem, you need to do some sort of regularization. Maybe you all know what regularization means. It's controlling the dimensionality. Now, Sims recognized this when he proposed the VAR structure. And he said, the solution is to keep m small, two or three. Okay, but of course, that's not the only approach to regularization. So I list a few methods here, we're going to go on. So you could set m and p as small. Like I said, Sims suggested that it's really, fundamentally, that's arbitrary. That's its own satisfactory. Another thing which a lot of people used in the early days and continues to be done is to do classic model selection, namely to use the AIC criteria, the BIC criteria. Or we're in the UK, so people do testing. But these, we call them in statistics, hard threshold rules. And we know, going back to judge and other things from a long time ago, that hard threshold rules lead to estimators with poor risk, high risk, meaning high mean square forecast error for counseling and forecasting. So smooth methods tend to work better than hard methods. Another kind of regularization, penalization. We heard just a lot of Chris talking about things like Lasso and its family and things. I am not an expert in the Lasso, so I'm going to stay away from that. Let other people work on that. It's certainly very fashionable and very useful for handling large number of variables, but has also deficiencies about whether or not it's type of sparsity and stuff. The things I'm going to be talking about are closer to the ancient literature introduced by Stein about shrinkage methods and similar also to ideas of model combination. Now, in addition, a huge area that's specifically popular for the application of vector autoregressions is Bayesian methods or BVARS. Now, part of the reason I believe it got really popular in the VAR literature is because of Chris Sims. He felt he pushed this as a particularly constructive way of dealing with high-dimensional vector autoregressions. So it's widely used in the macro work. But what do the BVARS methods effectively do? It shrinks a large model down to a tight model. And Sims has emphasized the importance of very tight models. The tight models are priors where you're centering on. And the two most common things that Sims has pushed was the so-called Minnesota prior, which is a random walk, and sum coefficients prior, which is an integrated order one system without co-integration. Okay, there's a rich reply literature. But there's almost zero frequentist or sampling theory about this. And I just mentioned, there's like, I think the state of the art of the BVAR literature is this recent paper, Review Economics and Statistics, which showed using an out-of-sample comparison that BVARS are really kicked by defeating the competitors and leaving them in the dust. So I actually very aggressively pointing out how well it worked compared to other methods. Now, just to mention, I'd like to try to do something different than BVAR. One deficiency of the BVAR method, I believe, is that it produces identical shrinkage of the estimates regardless of the forecast horizon. That is, if you want forecast horizon equal one or horizon equal 12, it's exactly the same parameter estimate. There's no reason from a theoretical point of view that you'd want to use the same estimator for different forecast horizons. You simply have a different objective function. So probably the optimal model or the optimal degree of shrinkage depends on the variable you're looking at will depend on the forecast horizon. Another thing about the BVAR models or any kind of Bayesian methods is it's not designed to produce a model with good risk. It's designed to produce a method with high posterior odds. That is different. I am focused on thinking if you can articulate clearly your loss function and your risk function, then we can design methods that will do well for those things. I'm going to care about forecasting, I'm focusing on forecasting. I care about mean square forecast error. Another thing, which is my own personal pet peeve about the forecasting literature, everyone does out-of-sample forecast comparisons. Very, very, very popular. People often call it a gold standard. I don't think, however, that out-of-sample comparisons really tell us about sampling properties of estimators. They simply tell you how estimators work in particular samples. And one of the problems that we have, small samples, out-of-sample tend to exacerbate small sample problems. You have, the estimates are random, the initial sample statuses are very, very small, and that biases resorts towards extreme versions of shrinkage. Take, for example, this recent state-of-the-art paper. They work with a model which has seven variables, five lags. So that means that each equation has 36 parameters to estimate. And they do recursive estimations on the sample size 200, but they start with a sample size 59. So they're doing least squares estimation with 59 observations with 36 coefficients. I think we all know that that least squares estimate doesn't work very well. And in particular, the least squares estimate for forecasting is not going to give you a very good indication of what's going to happen with a full sample of 200 observations is used. In that context, the methods are going to tell you shrink aggressively because 36 is just far too many coefficients. I mean, you never would actually estimate 36 coefficients by least squares with only 59 observations. Now, what's the goal that I'm going to try to do here? I want to develop a frequentist estimator based on shrinkage, trying to focus on a user-specified measure of loss, mean square forecast error. And it turns out that it's closely related to the mean square error of impulse responses. It's going to come up with this, what I call a spine-type estimator and frequentist moving average. My estimators are going to be specific for the forecast horizon. So I'm going to say, you have a seven-variable system, but let's focus on forecasting GDP out of that seven-variable system at forecast horizon seven. And then the methods are going to vary by forecast horizon and by variable. So you're going to have a family of estimates. You could unify them, but my presumption is that you'll do better if you try to do the estimates from horizon to horizon. The methods effectively take the unconstrained least squares estimates and shrink them towards constrained estimates. Now, what the downside of this, the way I've phrased it so far, is that you need to have one overarching big model. So the one bigger overarching big model can't be too big because it has to be estimated pretty easily. It'd be nice to generalize this to where you have kind of a more big dataset. You have 200 observations, but you have 400 variables. I think I could probably handle that doing some sort of cross-validation method, but not right now. So this is not really high dimensional, more moderate dimensional. The basic theory that comes out is to recognize that these multi-step forecasts are nonlinear functions of our parameters. And then by the delta method, we could do asymptotic normality. And once you have normality, you can do Stein. So let's go back to the model. You have a dynamic equation, y is a linear function of lags. And then it'll be convenient to write that as y is equal to b x. What is x? X is leg wise, but just to write that as regression. Now, there's two ways of thinking about the parameter. It's b is a matrix, or you can take theta as a vector. Theta as a vector is useful when talking about asymptotic normality. But b is useful when thinking about the dynamics. It's also useful to think about the Markov representation. Namely, I have x is the list of all the y's. And so I can write it as a vector of order one. X is p times x-leg plus an error. Where p is a function of the parameters. It's just the parameters put out in that matrix there from a standard textbook format formula. That's useful because to think about forecasting, it's very convenient to iterate the VAR one equation rather than the VAR p equation. So what's my goal? I want to forecast one variable out of the system. So I have y as a vector, take the j-th element, and I'm going to fix the horizon h. So I'm going to forecast seven periods ahead, the first variable. So if you iterate the Markov representation, you find that x in h-th periods ahead is a linear function of x, of the current value of x in the past. That then tells you that the optimal point forecast is the j-th element of the vector p raised to power h times x. So you take this Markov representation matrix, you multiply it by itself h times, and then you multiply that by the current, the current list of the last values in the sample. You also can do the forecast by iterating the VAR equation specifically. But this is going to be convenient for the theory. That tells you that the optimal point forecast can be viewed as beta prime x, where beta is this p raised to power h matrix that you select off a column of it. So this is simply saying that the optimal forecast is a linear function of the regressors. The forecast coefficient beta, I was going to call it beta, but it's a function of theta. It's also specific to the variable j that you try to forecast and the forecast horizon h. But it's a nonlinear function, but it's a known nonlinear function of these things. So the optimal point forecast, once again, is beta prime x. Now, suppose you have an estimate beta hat. Then a feasible point forecast is beta hat prime x. So the forecast error is the difference between y and beta prime x or y minus beta hat prime x for the actual. So that tells you that the mean square forecast error is approximately the expected square of the error plus the expected square of the estimation part. And the expected square of the estimation part is the mean square error of beta hat. So the mean square forecast error is affected by estimation almost 100% through the mean square error of beta hat. Beta hat is this nonlinear function of the original parameter estimates theta hat, but it tells you what you care about. If I care about forecasting, I care about that object. This is weighted mean square error. So if I want to come up with an efficient forecast in the sense of small mean square forecast error, I want to have low mean square error of beta hat. So let's think about another problem, impulse response. Turns out that's the same deal. So when you do this, you take the model, you eliminate the intercept, and then you do the same analysis. Namely, I'll call z the list of all the y-lags. Then I have this Mark representation for z in terms of coefficients. It's kind of like the model for the original data, but there's no intercept in it. And then you iterate it a bunch of times. You realize that the impulse response of the j-th variable with respect to the shock vector is the j-th row of this p-matrix raised to power h. So once again, the impulse response is an element of the p-matrix raised to power h. And so it's identical to the forecast coefficient, just with the intercept eliminated. This is not new, this is all known stuff. But it's just convenient to realize that for out-of-sample forecasting and impulse response analysis, you're doing an estimated almost essentially the same nonlinear transformation of the variables, of the coefficients. So efficient, for efficient impulse response estimation, I'd like to have low mean square error of the impulse response estimate, which is really just the, you use mean square error as an estimate, a way of measuring its risk. That would depend in principle on a weight matrix. But unlike the forecasting case where the weight matrix is the design of the x's, there's no optimal or natural weight matrix here. You think probably the identity, which would be the one that we would think of. But I'm going to use q, just so I, I can use the design matrix, the x prime x matrix, just so that way I can have a unified treatment for impulse responses and forecasting for now. So once again, what's the general setting? I have a parameter vector. I have this nonlinear transformation of it called beta. I want to then think about the mean square error of this estimate. So L is the expectation of an estimator in a quadratic form. I multiply it by sample size, so that way we can do asymptotics. And so L is the risk of the estimator, say, beta tilde. So now I want to calculate the risk of a bunch of estimators and pick the estimator with the smallest risk. Now suppose that you have an estimator beta tilde that's asymptotic to normal. But let's suppose it has an asymptotic bias because you're not using the full sample, not the biggest model. I use some sort of small model in some way. Then beta tilde could be asymptotic to normal with some delta bias, some delta in the asymptotic mean. And if you want to think about it formally, you'd get that by thinking of that your big model is local to the, to a small model in kind of the standard framework. But it doesn't really matter what it is for our purposes now. But it's, delta's the bias. And then the asymptotic variance is some asymptotic variance matrix, okay? So if the mean square error is this quadratic expectation of beta tilde, then the risk, L, and beta tilde has this asymptotic distribution, then the risk is approximately delta prime w delta, or w is q, but delta is prime q delta plus the variance part, which is the trace of the weight matrix times the variance of beta hat. So we know the form of the mean square error. It's a quadratic in the bias plus the variance. Well, mean square error is bias plus variance. Okay, we knew that, but I'm just writing that out here. I want to find an estimator with small values, the risk, okay? How we can do that? We have to estimate it. So L is bias squared plus variance. I need, the variance is the easy part. We have formulas for the variance typically. What about the bias? Well, this is where I'm going to punt in a sense that, let's assume you have an approximately unbiased estimator. That's the big, so I have a supermodel that's approximately unbiased. Then an estimate of the bias is the difference between the full model estimate and the small model estimate. That's delta hat multiplied by root n, the scaling. That suggests that you estimate the risk by delta hat prime, the squared bias by delta hat in the quadratic form. Well, this problem with that, and that is biased. That is, because of the scaling, delta hat is kind of random. And so the expected value of delta hat prime delta hat is the true bias squared plus the variance of delta hat. Okay, so an unbiased estimator of the risk is the squared bias estimate minus the variance part that you don't really want there, plus the variance of the original estimator. So there's these three components. And, but this is all now quite feasible. You have just your estimator, an estimator of the variance and an estimator of the variance. Once you have this formula, then you're going to pick the estimator with the one with the smallest estimated risk. Is this complicated? Well, this is really Akai Egi. And he just was doing it in context of cold look live or risk, but it really goes back to him. An idea closest related to this specific context is the focused information criterion of Shored and Klasikis, where they're saying, hey, if you have a parameter of interest, you can write down the loss function. Just when they do, in their work, they're thinking of the theta as being a scalar. My beta is a vector. So let's now think about estimators. Well, the simplest estimator is, the big estimator is least squares on everything. So beta hat is least squares estimator. Theta is the vector of that, is asymptotic to normal. So then you form, the beta hat is this nonlinear function, which is, you form this matrix and then iterate it h times. And then you do the point forecast based on beta hat. And now the delta method tells you that beta hat is approximately a linear function of the delta hat, sorry, linear function of the theta hat. And so therefore, it's asymptotic to normal with a standard delta hat covariance matrix. Okay, now, why is that important? Because I'm going to estimate that variance to calculate the risk. Now, to shrink, we need to have smaller models. Now, this is where Sims comes to play. Sims said, hey, the small model should be the random walk. That when else, you don't know what to do, use a random walk because data is approximately a random walk, right? So, but in general, we could use a whole bunch of different restriction, smaller models. You started out with a VAR of order p. Obviously, a VAR of order r, for any r less than p, is a good idea. So that's the most natural restriction, is lag restrictions. Another natural restriction would be some sort of exclusion restriction. I haven't thought, I haven't probably thought about exactly how to make this happen yet, but I think it makes sense that if you have like 10 variables, you might want to think about using a bar or, which is one variable, two variables, and three variables. Maybe you have a hierarchy of what variables are most important and not. And so I would like to, I haven't done this numerically, but I'd like to implement the idea of using smaller models as well as big models as something we could combine over. Sims' idea, of course, is random walk. Drift is a natural restriction model. Another one that he's pushed is the I-1 model with a coefficient matrix he's summed with identity. When you have restrictions, you can write them as, b is the coefficient matrix, b times a restriction matrix, r is equal to another matrix, a. Little r is going to index the restriction. Let's suppose we have m different restrictions, m different models. So this is again like random walk model, sub-coefficients model, VAR one, VAR two, VAR three, et cetera. To do constrained least squares is really easy. Of course, you can just do least squares on your model, or you can just do a linear transformation of the big model. That's convenient because then the parameters of interest are just going to be linear transformation. That's convenient, because then the parameters of interest are just going to be linear transformations of the big model that is useful for the asymptotic theory, namely that the theta hat estimated on a restriction model is approximately a linear function of the theta hat on the big model, and therefore it's a linear rotation of the same normal random vector. But each of the restricted models is going to have some sort of bias delta, which, so you have a smaller variance, but some sort of big bias. The coefficient of interest beta hat is constructed from these restricted models, and then you get your point forecast for each model, and that is, this algebra is just telling you, it's by the delta method approximately a linear function of the big model estimate, and therefore it's asymptotic to normal with a variance covariance matrix I can compute. So that's all that's really saying. And then for the estimate of risk, it turns out that there's two variance covariance matrices you need. You need the variance covariance matrix, the difference between your estimator and the true beta, that's the third bullet point. Then the last bullet point is the difference between the least squares estimator and the restricted estimator, and it has the variance from there. So you need, what's important here is that you just need to have these two covariance matrices in order to do the risk calculation. So now let's think about what I would call Stein shrinkage, going back to the passive work by Stein. So you already have two estimators. One is the full estimator of the kitchen sink, and the other is some sort of restriction model, and that would be like the random walk. The Stein estimator is a linear combination of those two estimators, so I'll call it b hat star with a weight w. Weight times beta hat plus one minus w times the restriction beta 1. To calculate the optimal weight, you need to calculate the variance of the estimator and the variance of the difference of the estimator and the least squares estimator. So you just plug it in and play around a bit with the formulas, and you can get out the exact formula of those two things. Where you see the variance of beta hat star has a component that doesn't depend on the weight and a component that is multiplied by the square of the weight. And the asymptotic variance of the difference of the least squares estimator and the Stein estimator is quadratic in one minus the weight. So you just work out that algebra, you can find those expressions. And then you plug those into the Stein estimate of risk, namely the risk is the quadratic in the difference between the Stein estimator and the least squares, that's your estimate of bias, minus the variance of that component, plus the variance of the estimator. Since we work out these formulas, which were quadratic, and you work them out, you find that the Stein estimate of risk is a quadratic in the weight plus a linear term times a penalty tau, where the quantity tau depends upon the variance estimators. So what we have, we have the risk of a Stein estimator, which is a linear, so you take a linear combination of the least squares estimator and a restricted estimator as a function of the weight, you work out what the risk is of that estimator viewed as a function of the weight, and then you minimize that across all weights. This is conceptually the same idea as picking the model with the smallest B I C, but instead of just picking across models, I'm picking across this continuum of weights. And the minimizer is this formula, one minus tau divided by this quadratic in the coefficient estimates. So what is that denominator? It says that if the restricted estimator beta 1 hat is close to the unrestricted estimator beta hat, that denominator will be small. If that's too true, then tau divided by that will be big, and this weight will be zero, and all the weight will be put on the restricted model. On the other hand, if the difference between these two estimates is big, then the ratio tau to that quadratic form is small, and the weight's going to be close to 1, you put all the weight on the unrestricted estimator. So the Stein estimator is a linear combination of the two estimators, where the weights just take them dodge, based on the data, depending on the information in the data. And as Stein originally showed, this does better than the original estimator, the longitude dimension exceeds 3, or something depending upon the actual coefficient tau you use. And so you end up with this kind of estimator. Beta hat stars is a linear combination with this particular weight function, and you shrink towards something like random walk, and the tau is this particular functional form. Now that's, so that's a conceptually simple idea, but in practice, probably people don't want to really just shrink towards a random walk, because that's a little bit too narrow. So instead, I might think that I've estimated a bunch of different models. I've estimated var 1, a var 2, var 3, all the way up to the big model. I estimated random walk, I estimated the I-1 model, I estimate models possibly with a different number of variables in them, but just a bunch of models, a whole bunch of them, where they're all special cases of the big var. Each special case estimator corresponds to a particular restriction matrix, a particular least squares estimator, a particular forecast coefficient, a particular point forecast, okay? I want to combine all of them. So I define a weight vector which has the same dimension as the number of models. I'm going to constrain my weights to be positive and sum to 1. That is an important regularization, it could be relaxed, but you have to have some sort of regularization on the weights. The comment that says combination, but it's combination, that's a nice phrase, combination. The combination estimator is the linear combination of these individual estimators, and you can view it as a linear functional in the weight vector. And our combination forecast is this, of course, same weights, you just take your point estimates, you aggregate them using these combination weights. The asymptotic distribution of the estimator with fixed weights is a normal random variable with a bias and a variance, and the variance you can estimate. The asymptotic distribution of the difference between the least squares estimator and this combination estimator is also asymptotically normal with a bias and a variance, and you can estimate the variance, there's a formula. You then plug those into the estimate of risk. So the estimate of risk, again, is a quadratic in the difference between the combination estimator and the least squares estimator, minus an estimate of the variance, plus an estimate of the other variance. And then you do some algebra, and you find that it is precisely a quadratic expression in the weights, where the quadratic part has to do with the coefficient estimates of the different models, and the linear part has to do with penalty terms. So the estimate of the risk is a quadratic in the measures of the deviations of the estimates from the big estimator, subject to a penalty, which I kind of like the number of parameters being estimated. So let me find, again, the estimate of the risk of a combination estimator is a quadratic in the weight vector, it's the estimate of the risk. The estimate of rate vector should be the choice, or could be the choice, I'm going to advocate that it is the choice, which minimizes our estimate of the risk, goes our estimated best combination. Conceptually, it's similar to the old idea of Akaiki, which says, pick the model with the smallest estimated click. Our final prediction error is that select the model with the smallest estimated mean square forecast error, or cross validation, which is selecting the model with the smallest expected square error, the focus information we're hearing. The difference is that we're picking, instead of a model, we're selecting a weight vector. So I want to minimize a quadratic, that would be really trivial, except that the weights should lie in the unit simplex. Turns out it's still trivial, it's just quadratic programming, that gives you your weight of beta hat, you can use that for forecast combination, or it also equals the impulse response at a specific horizon. The combination forecast is just the average of these guys. It has some similarities with some other work of the done. When m equals 2, this is identical to the, I call the asymptotic Stein estimator, the paper just came out in the Journal of Econometrics. When forecast horizon is 1, this is identical to what I call the Malthus model averaging estimator. But when h is bigger than 1, we have this nonlinear transformation, so it's different. And also, it's identical to the forecast model averaging estimator in the Journal of Econometrics paper. But the generalization occurs when the number of models exceeds 2 and the horizon exceeds 1, and that's, this hasn't been presented formally, kind of a nonlinear multi-model generalization of these techniques. Computation is all very simple. Let's do a simulation experiment. This is all very preliminary. My research assistant emailed me the results on Saturday night. Back before I was going to get on the plane on Sunday, so it's, so it's going through a lot of iterations, of course. So for simplicity, I, at this point, have done a var with two lags with five variables. So each equation has like 11 possible coefficients in it, not that much, but I have a small sample, 50, so that we still have finite sample effects. Now, how do I parameterize this? I want to try to have a model which has a lot of persistence, kind of close to a random walk, but also a lot of dynamic. So I have a parameter c, which, when it's 0, everything's going to be I-1. And so B1, the leading coefficient, is close to an identity matrix, and B2, and then B1 plus B2 have this extra deviation, which is just, all the variables affect everything symmetrically with another coefficient, little b. And that's just done because I want to have everything affecting everything else. So when the parameter c is 0, the variables are I-1, so I want to think of c being positive but small. When b is equal to 0, the process is a vector of autoregression order 1, so I want to think about moving b from 0 to a positive number to see the effect of correlation. And it's symmetric in all the variables, so I don't, when I look at the mean square forecast error, I can just look at any of the variables, so just look at the first one. I set to, the simulation, I generated data of length, sample size 50 plus 32, I throw away the first 20, and then use 50 for estimation, and then the remaining 12 for forecasting. So I generate out-of-sample forecasts for horizons 1 through 12, based on the sample size 50, and then compare the forecast with the realizations and calculate mean square forecast error using 10,000 simulations. And then to normalize, I take, I'm going to pick the mean square error of the different methods and compare it with least squares, so least squares is the best mark. So if the numbers are less than 1, it's doing better than least squares, and if bigger than 1, then not. What are the methods I compare? I do least squares on the full model, the vector of autoregression order 2. I also estimate a var 1, I estimate a random walk, with, random walk, you just estimate the intercept after differencing. Then I do the Stein shrinkage of combining those models. So the Stein shrinkage estimator is just m equals 3, 3 models here. And then also I compare with the Bayesian var method. I just, I take this, a recent paper, Review in Economics and Statistics, I think it's kind of touted as being the state of the art of the bvar literature, and I just use their default, the default method, they've kindly have the MATLAB code on the web, so it's easy to use. One computational note is, that method takes like 30 times, I don't know, much more computational because it's estimated by MCMC, so it's, computationally, my method is trivial, their method is, well, you know, you don't make that long. So what is this table? This is a case for b equals 0, meaning that the truth is just the var 1. And I'm going to vary the parameter c from 0.1 to 0.3, this is degree of persistence, so when c is equal to 0, you have random walk, and as it gets positive, it gets more stationary. And this is the relative mean square forecast error of the methods relative to least squares. So numbers less than 1 mean the methods do better than least squares. So if you look at h equal to 1, one step ahead forecast, the bvar model does the best. It has relative mean square forecast error about 75% to 82% of that of least squares. And the method I'm proposing does slightly worse, so I'm happy about that. Maybe I have to shrink in some other extra one dimensions, but what I think is intriguing though, this is what I expected, is that when you look at the long horizons, the ranking flips. So like, if you look at the 12-step-ahead horizon for like c equals 0.2 or 0.3, the bvar method is doing worse than least squares. And then, but the Stein method is doing better than least squares, although not necessarily much better. Now, you say, why would the bvar method do worse? It's simply because it's not targeted for that problem. It's designed to produce a model with high posterior odds, it's not designed to produce a method with low mean square forecast error. So there's no reason to expect it to do well. And it, that's what happens. While the Stein method is designed, so remember, the forecast coefficients are different across forecast horizons. Effectively, what's happening is that the long horizons, you're doing more shrinkage, because at long horizons, the least squared estimates are noisy, and so you want to take that into account. That's b equals 0, here's, b equals 0.5, 0.05, and the results are essentially the same, not a huge difference in the estimates. I increase this to 0.1, or this is the largest I go up, because at 0.2, the log has, leaves a stationary region. And so once again, what you're finding is that for one-step-ahead forecast, the bvar method has very good progress, but for higher forecast horizons, you can do better by the shrinkage method in general. But this is all still very preliminary, and this is, of course, constrained to this particular simulation experiment. So to conclude, shrinkage is a type of regularization, it can improve precision. There's, of course, other kinds of shrinkage that we could use. I think that the Stein shrinkage is particularly well-suited when we have a clearly articulated risk function that happens to be quadratic. When you have a risk function that's not quadratic, we don't really know how to estimate the risk that easily. So that's partly why the quadratic is pretty cool. The simulations also tell us a little caveat, which is that a long horizon's h, it's really difficult to improve on least squares. That's kind of sad. And just by the way, what's important, when people are doing like monthly var for forecasting, nobody cares about one-step-ahead forecast. You know, just to be blunt here, when you're doing monthly forecast, you're interested in a year ahead, two years ahead, you're in a long-term forecast, because that's what matters. Most often, you know, one step ahead, it's just the current value, it is pretty much low. So you are, but policymakers, what they want is things that are a year or two years from now at a minimum. So when I say that the long horizons, you know, you have these ranking differences, that's because that's what's important. I mean, I think it's probably, I know, like, if you're a short-term frequency trader, maybe you care about short horizons, but for like macro forecasting, I think the long horizons are more relevant for decision-making. So that's it.
I wonder, is there any bvar, or maybe some modern average, or some empirical-based procedure which can exactly replicate your shrinkage?
I don't know. So the traditional, so I really don't know, but in the case of two models, the Stein estimator has a representation in terms of a Bayes estimator, but have a funny prior. A funny prior, that's a technical term. But you go look like in the book, in Legginsala and stuff, where there is a prior that will produce a Stein estimator, but it's not very natural. But what happens there is that it's kind of quasi-Bayes. But in the multiple case, we don't know. I don't know. But one would guess so.